Mr. Bracknell, any discussion? Favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
And you opposed?
Aye.
One opposed. Okay, resolution for bank signature cards. Mrs. Daly, you want to read that?
I don't have it, Mayor. Give me just a second. Thank you.
There you go. I sit down.
Sorry, sorry. This is a resolution to authorize the addition of interim city administrator Carter Crawford and CFO and City Clerk Jan Gerstenberger to the City of Temple bank accounts as signatories and removing Jim Baxley as a signatory. Whereas the City of Temple maintains a number of bank accounts and whereas the mayor and council of the City of Temple, Georgia desire to authorize the addition of interim city administrator Carter Crawford and CFO and City Clerk Jan Gerstenberger as signatories on the city's various bank accounts, whereas the mayor and council of the City of Temple, Georgia desire to authorize the removal of Jim Baxley as a signatory on the city's various bank accounts. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of Temple hereby authorize the addition of interim city administrator Carter Crawford and CFO and City Clerk Jan Gerstenberger as signatories on the city's various bank accounts and the removal of Jim Baxley as a signatory. And repealing all resolutions or parts of resolutions in direct conflict with this resolution.
Okay, y'all hear the reading of the resolution? Do I hear most of it through?
I have a motion to accept the motion.
Mr. Bracknell hears second. Second, Mr. Walden, any discussion? Favor, say, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, carried. Okay. Now, this is a resolution for bank signature cards. Okay, computer system software, Mr. Bracknell.
Yes, sir. There's several, actually five and six kind of go together.
Okay.
Because we're in the process of, you know, ending or burying an antique here with the record keeping.
Mm-hmm.
And also looking exactly what to do. There's, what I would like to do is put forth then in a motion that we establish a committee of Mr. Crawford, Ms. Gerstenberger, to seek out, to make sure that what we are in contract with, the computer system that we're in contract with, if it's appropriate or if there isn't a much better Windows-based, more effective system. And to deal with, we got to, we got to have a way of preserving our history with TBS. So, Mr. Crawford and Ms. Gerstenberger need to be also addressing that. So, I make a motion that, that we establish, that we would like to have a computer system that is Windows-based, that it is being used by at least a dozen Georgia municipalities, those in North Georgia where it's easy to go and see, see the computer program in place to decide whether or not we need to proceed with what we've got or whether we need to look at that. It's, it's critical that we get away from this antiquated system, but we got to get everything ended and everything dealt with. So, this whole process would probably take, what, sixty, sixty days?
Sixty.
To give them, you know, to give them that period of time to put it together and come back and make a presentation. So, but I would like to make a motion, give them the authority to seek these computer systems to figure out which one we serve them best. Some of them will, some of them are unbelievable, what they will produce and what you can record and what you can keep up with so that it's electronic rather than paper.
Okay, Mrs. Daly, the charter says that the mayor appoints a committee.
Yeah, I don't think you necessarily need a committee, planning committee. I think it's just because their city administrator or city clerk, I think he was giving direction.
I do not have a problem with the city administrator and Mr. Bracknell.
Oh, or Mr. Bracknell.
No, 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 Ms. Gerstenberger.
He's talking about the city clerk.
I'm talking about them, not me at all. Those, the chief financial officer and the city administrator to seek it out. And the reason is that, you know, all of us can think about the various aspects of it, but they're dealing with it, Mr. Crawford has dealt with it in a number of cities, he's familiar with a number of different programs. Ms. Gerstenberger, yeah, she has dealt with these systems. She's aware of interfacing and being able to produce the product that we need. And I think that one of the most important things, things here is to have the people who are going to be using this to talk with their employees and to figure out exactly what they want. Because they certainly know what we're looking for as far as being able to keep up with what's going on. So, my motion would be to give them the authority to put it together for us, to look at the backing up of the prior and getting us a plan in place to see if we need to keep what we, what we've got under contract now, figure out what it would involve in getting rid of that contract. And then to see, one of the most important things is to be able to interface our system across the board with Fogo and then be able to back stuff up in a cloud account. So, it's, we've got to be careful with this, and that's the reason I say we need to let them visit the work sites, you know, so they take into account what is working, what isn't working, and then give them a little direction there.
I have no problem with appointing those two individuals as a committee. Mrs. Bracknell.
Okay, I agree. The council can give them directions to do that without a committee, but I'm, I'm a little bit confused. I was told early on when I got here that the system was a lot of our problem and that it was because we had only paid like twenty thousand dollars short of another twenty thousand that were owed for our new upgrade, that we were twenty thousand in and they're waiting on the other twenty to come in and give us an upgrade. So, by the time Mr. Baxley got here and was actually trying to restructure our water rates, he had told me that the problem was who we were, like he would have recommended going with another company. So, is this about the upgrade that we're talking about here or is this about going with a completely other company?
It's more of a company yourself.
So, can we do that even though we're having to?
Yeah, I still, the contract is a fifteen day cancellation that is, but you would be responsible for paying for whatever they've actually done.
They went into this upgrade like a couple of years ago and paid half, but it never paid the other half.
Yeah, that's what I'm telling what, I don't know what their fees would have, they have been incurred at this point, but.
I mean, I'm confused, what I.
There's a monthly service fee and then there's the upgrade.
Right, but what I was told was like, just say this upgrade was like fifty grand and we paid twenty thousand out of splash money with it, started project, and we had to put in our capital budget the other twenty thousand to complete that splash project. So, we're talking on who? I want the legal ramifications of starting, stopping a project, have the money's been given?
Well, I don't know where they are in terms of what they've done, because the way the contract reads is that you, and I sent that to Carter so he's got it, was that they would be, whatever fees they had incurred at the point of cancellation. I don't know where they are and how much they have done, because my understanding is that they didn't, they didn't start the upgrade.
They didn't start the new upgrade, but that upgrade was paid for in half seven years ago.
And there's a fifteen day cancellation. These are stuff he's gonna have to be.
Right, so I guess that would be my question that's going in, because everybody that I've heard has said we probably should not have gone, you know, there were other options besides upgrading with who we were with necessarily, but my question is how do we do that with the fact that we paid half of the money down for a contract to upgrade with them years ago and never completed it?
Well, I'm very familiar with this system. Since nineteen seventy-nine, I've been familiar, and this system is, is probably nineteen eighties at best, using the AS400 computer system, for, to give you an example. In order to write a check, the county's payable clerk has to go through five different steps for that computer system to do that. It's, it's a dinosaur. And if you put any more million money, I just advise you, if you put any more money in there, there's money down the drain. And it needs to be backed up with the cloud system. And we need, my recommendation is to go out and legally, through, through the, or personal ordinance, study what's out there, if this, you know, if it's viable for us to go through a bit of this. One of the requirements that I always have when I'm getting out, especially computer software, is number one, you've got to have a local government presence in the state of Georgia. And we want to go on site to see how that software is working. And I do that example, I shut up, a friend of mine who's city manager in a certain city I won't mention, and he asked me about the software, where I can see our current, well, I called him about this new software, he said, "Oh, man, this stuff's great." And I said, "We want to come up with my finance personnel, the top bill finance personnel, and see how it works." And when we got in there, the city clerk said, "This stuff is gone." So, you need to talk to who's, who's running the system, because people like the city managers and the city administrators usually don't know.
And I guess, I just want my concerns clarified, because I was asking, you know, I kept being told it's the upgrade, you pay for half an upgrade and we don't have the other half of the upgrade, and when we did the other half of the upgrade, it's going to be all great. So, my question is if we've got twenty thousand down on the new upgrade that they've never brought, and we've got a balance owed on a new upgrade, did that, make sure we can get out of that, what the cost would be, and the fact that it was listed on our capital budget as a starting project was washed?
That's the one thing we got.
Mr. Mayor.
Those, that would be my.
Mrs. Daly said we have a what, three day?
Fifteen day cancellation.
See, that was my motion, is so that all of that data can be collected and can be presented back, if it's possible to get out of that, what it would cost us, what we need, you know, all of these kind of things, to actually bid it out and to look at it and to see what we can get back, to see where we are. So, my motion is just to allow them to proceed with taking all of this into consideration.
Okay, we've got a motion by Mr. Bracknell, and I could say the charter states that the mayor appoints committees. Do I hear a second? Mr. Bracknell's motion. I'll say, I second with Mr. Simmons. Any discussion?
If we don't make a committee, you just have to direct it to employees to make it a document.
That is exactly what I was trying to say. Any discussion? We've got a motion, a second.
Mr. Mayor, if I, I would, I would be more than happy to correct. I, I'm just used to it, to direct our city administrator and our city, our finance, chief financial officer to get us all of this information so that we can make an intelligent decision.
Okay, that's your second, Mr. Simmons?
Yes, sir.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's carried. Okay, item number seven, Chief Thorn.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman. I know the original plan was to move the PD into the Bank of North Georgia. And I know y'all purchased it for, for our use, so we're very grateful for that. Initially, we had looked at the location across the street, felt that location better suited our needs, because it did not have the floor to put high ceilings and a safe room and all that would be. Now that the city has acquired that property, I'm asking if you guys will let us change the location of the PD to this location, let the property on the north side of the property, pardon, the north side of the intersection.
Yes, sir, Mr. Simmons.
I've had some citizens said to me that they think the building you're talking about moving from would be more appropriate for City Hall. And he thought the, well, this should be across.
He talked about on the north side.
That's one of his questions.
Well, the, the safe room is bigger. We want to build in the lobby area and with the Bank of North Georgia, you'd end with a thirty or forty foot high ceiling in a lobby area, so that basically will amount to waste space. And I just think that the building on the north side of the intersection would better suit our needs. And that, in addition, it's got one, one additional office in it already. That's something we would not have to, into the North Georgia location.
I've heard the chief's request, yes, ma'am.
I just want to know what, how we legally do that, if we purchased it for, for the first part of the motion.
General City Council, clear.
Well, the motion, as y'all bought it, was for the PD. I mean, that was the motion.
Mm-hmm. That was the motion, and now he's requesting that the city switch those, because he, he is stating that the P, the other building would make a better PD and much cheaper, correct?
Yes, yes, it's more square feet, there's a, there's an additional office, the safe room, which could be used for elements of the wall. And I just think it would be better city properties. Plus, I'm under the impression that we can still use the parking lot and the property across the street if we have to park vehicles over there, so as long as that's, that's fine, I guess, I don't think it'll be an issue.
Of city property, sir.
You understand what, Chief, and I'm not trying to understand what you had planned was that, that they, whatever, construction is going to be made for the one that you're being.
Yes.
It's going to cost more.
Yes, for the, I said, why, why, the Bank of North Georgia, it would cost us more.
Do you know what those differences are yet?
Yeah.
We was moving to the Bank of North Georgia with AS400, around twenty thousand dollars for renovations, close off offices, secure offices and walls and windows for GCIC, because they won't allow us to go in there until we have these halls, these rooms and offices closed off. And then we have another estimate for. To move into, what's the bank?
CNS.
CNS.
CNS, we got a total cost of twenty-four hundred eighty dollars. Twenty-four eighty, so you're talking eighteen thousand dollars to.
Two thousand.
Yes, so we move into CNS, we don't have hardly any renovations other than to secure that front door, cross that countertop, and additional couple of doors, and that's it. But we moving to that other one, by ceiling being at high and no doors and all that, so it's a lot more renovations to do.
Ma'am, Mrs. Millie.
Our current budget, we have five thousand.
Current budget, we have five thousand renovation, relocation deal, and I think his figure is renovation and we still have a, a deal for Fogo.
Yeah, I spoke to Fogo and I've had the technicians come out, and spent several hours going through all the new high panel, as far as rewiring the system, using the current camera system that's already installed, everything, adding on our phone system, everything that it takes to get us in that building to run. I got addition costs from Fogo at two thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars. So, everything falls.
Both of those figures are well within the five thousand dollars that there's, I'm kidding.
Yes, sir, that's what it costs us if we get this other building.
Okay, yes, sir, Mr. Simmons.
Do we have to make a motion to change?
Yes, sir. I'm sure you would have to make a motion to switch these buildings.
I thought we.
Kind of motion for Mr. Simmons that we switch these buildings with PD for their request. Do I hear a second?
Can we do it?
If it was a second, then we'll discuss it.
Okay, I'll give you the second.
Okay, we've got a second now. Any discussion?
The way I approved it was a motion for the PD, the purchase, and the, I don't, I'm not sure what accounts that you've taken or not out, but that's how you did it. And the cost, of course, is going to be more to go in the Bank of North Georgia according to that, but that is how y'all purchased it.
My question, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my question would be, is, same question I've been asking for months, that I would know the correct way to vote when this type of stuff comes up, and it's the exact same question I just asked about the computer system. There are rules and laws regarding splashed purchases. If you purchase something with money alloticated in a properly by ordinance adopted capital budget, what do you have to do to change that purchase once it becomes city property? You're not changing the ownership, but my question is what?
The use.
What is the legality with splash for the use of capital out of purchases? That's my question.
I don't know that that has ever been addressed, I know it hasn't in the case law, because you're talking about two buildings that are basically value the same, type of same pool of them. And with the renovations, you would actually be less, I think, I'm doing my, I think you would be just even, just about the top of your room, if I remember right, you would have studied on your cost, so your cost would be about the same. So, that's never been answered, because it's used, because it's still the cities. I mean, it's a kind of.
Let me follow that question I said.
Both buildings were purchased by splash money.
Right, but let me just re, correct my question. The question was this, you have to go down to splash money and splash approved purchases. Now, this was purchased with O H splash. O H splash had both administrative projects was listed on the referendum, police department projects were listed on the referendum. But however, the money was alloticated within last year's capital budget when it was purchased under police department. So, at this point, this case law, does it not state if you have two purchases, both splash money, let's say capital projects, anything over five thousand, let's say you've got a fifteen thousand dollar dump truck that belongs, quote, under public works projects, but later you start a road crew separate from that, or, I mean, is there anything?
There's not any case law. There's not any cases in that.
As in all, as it's within approved purchases for that year?
Now, what you're talking about is you purchased it for the PD and you purchased another building for City Hall.
Out of two separate capital budgets.
But you're paying, it's like six and a half dozen the other in terms of the money, I think, if they're even. So, you're coming to the question of use following if you wanted to switch the two locations.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. You know, what I'm asking about is the ordinance, the capital budget that we adopted for fourteen, when we purchased that building, was for PD, there was no money in our capital budget for an admin at all.
Yeah, but they purchased it.
And they purchased the other one, they didn't say where there was no money alloticated for a PD, it's simply money.
Yeah, they both were purchased, as I understand it, the question is, and how you, if you ended up flip flopping and using them the other way, there's not any cases on the court. Because I review the, there's twenty something splash cases, I don't find any that have the devil that specific issue.
Because the buildings are, the building, I, I can't remember that the building was basically designed privately. We're not deceiving the taxpayers at all.
One bit.
We, we are, we are trying our best to get bargains, when we can get bargains, I mean.
There's no money left to do, but I can.
In fact, you were saving the people money.
I'm standing by my motion then, because we're not deceiving them, but we're actually saving them money by doing it that way.
Then my next question, ma'am.
Just for one second. Still got a motion and a second to switch these buildings. Discussion, yes, ma'am.
The last discussion I had about it, and it's not that I had a problem with it either way, I just want to make sure that we're following this motion always correctly. The fact that the motion was made to purchase this with police department funds, would we actually be?
You're doing this, if I understand what you're doing.
Would it require a super majority to change that, or are you just?
I think that requires a super majority, that's what, that's in terms of the use. Would require a super majority, because you already have a.
If they have a super majority, then it is legal to do.
Well, I, there's no case law on that, on the use after purchase, if you switched them with them in, bagged them equally, there's nothing, there's no case law on it, so.
Nobody challenged it in COVID, because there was no reason to.
No reason to challenge this, sir.
No, none whatsoever.
Well, it doesn't make sense, but y'all can even do it quicker. We have a lot of space.
Yeah, and it's, we're people safe by getting them in the building. Yes, sir. Good guy, spent three nights, was getting in there.
Correct. Motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor of switching these two buildings for the chief and PD's request, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's carried.
Well, not that, the legality is, I'm not comfortable with at this moment, so I'm far behind here.
Okay, Mrs. Daly, that is four books, correct? That's enough.
Yes, sir.
Okay, proceed, ma'am. Okay, item number eight, Jim Baxley's expense, proceed.
I think we could do eight, a, and a.
Okay.
And eight altogether.
Okay.
And I made y'all all copies of work in progress, and there's still things that are probably going to have to be done, but we can kind of look over them and go from here with them.
Do we need a work session on, on this, or what do you think?
I would prefer, but if we got to do it tonight before we can proceed with some things, then, but I don't think we would have to.
We're doing eight and a.
We're doing eight, a, and a.
My question for this?
Ma'am?
But I've got a question regarding the one we moved down to. So, is that what we're actually on?
Well, we're doing all three of them. Go ahead, what's your question?
So, are we actually doing the one right here where it was addressing the, the clarification? What are we on?
We're on a Jim Bax, Baxley's expense.
Okay, so we're not on the one that we moved down, we're addressing.
No.
Okay, so then under number eight, I'm not saying this expense, I had heard about it for different things, do you have a copy of one of those that's turned in?
I have the actual receipts that he's turned in, and they're for mileage and lunches and where he thought he was acting in the capacity of the city administrator, and these are all his receipts. And I see no reason for it not to come out of the contingency.
But these were done in fourteen, correct? Or in fifteen?
Yes.
Are they done in fourteen or fifteen?
I think some of them are fifteen, I think they're, they're both, they're all together.
But the contingency was depleted for fourteen, pretty much depleted. But if some of these receipts are for fourteen.
He asked for reimbursement.
In fifteen. Okay. Now, I've got two questions regarding this, and one of which I wasn't aware that we were paying for city lunches inside the city limits or that it had been approved. The question I had is I had gotten a phone call about someone had asked for this during open records and were told that they didn't exist, and this is the first time I've been able to see them too. And that kind of bothers me, and I'm sorry, I mean, I don't mean to call anybody out, but if you call me at home and you ask me a question, I can't give the information.
I was told they were available, but they did not exist.
Okay, so that also would concern me about it.
Well, I'm thinking what happened with them, the mayor sent them down to me and I brought them back up here, so, and at the last campus meeting, and highly put them on the agenda, because I said I can't afford to spend.
How they got here then?
My question with this number.
Let me see.
Let me.
I have no idea what we're talking about, sorry. What are we talking about?
Mr. Baxley's turned in some receipts, expenses that he's got in there, and, and much.
Can I have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
The problem that I have with the reimbursement of these expenses is the problem that whenever the city council came out and voted to go into the contract, or not necessarily contract, but to obtain a interim city administrator, the question that I asked repeatedly is, because there were some discrepancies about even the salary, there were discrepancies about what he was asking for versus what I, as a council member, was willing to vote to be able to do. And I was told that had to come back out front, and I was told that for the first two or three months, I believe it was, the city clerk went and obtained the documentation, brought it to us, that there was enough money left in that payroll line due to the fact due to the fact that we were absent of city clerk and we were absent in other positions to take us through about two months to give us the chance to vote to amend the budget through a month budget amendment, which would show his salary. We finished up the year and this council never agreed on what we were gonna pay him. And in the October budget that was given to me, nowhere in that budget did it even show his salary. It wasn't even in there, I brought it out in the open meeting. So I don't know how we turn around and pay for reimbursements. And we never even amended a budget to show he was being paid. The taxpayers can't even get a copy of their budget and show what he was being paid. And that has, unfortunately, I've asked the question repeatedly, and I've yet to get an answer other than I can't make people do budget amendments, and the law says, and I've asked, when do they have to be done? December the thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. So I'm not quite sure where reimbursements or city lunches are on the taxpayers' dime, where two people can leave here and go get paid by taxpayers, they eat lunch somewhere, was approved by the council on our budget, and I'm not gonna pay with it, because I couldn't even get the opportunity to vote through a budget amendment on what we were gonna pay him.
I agree, um, that's why I didn't sign them, because they were not in the, uh, budget. But, um, Mrs. Miller has got budget amendments here, I guess, uh, that will be put in there to amend the budget. So, Mrs. Daly, do we do the budget amendments first?
Well, that would just be a first read, I think, can y'all, for y'all to talk on that a little bit. I mean, y'all gotta have a public, um, argument on it.
I would, can I, Mayra, Mayra?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Crawford, um, have either one of y'all had time yet to even know, just going into fifteen, what budget amendments that we need to have a complete list? Or do you think if we did a work session going from what Ms. Miller's done, that it would help you to be able to present budget amendments to us the way the charter would require it to be done?
Well, I think at some point in time we're gonna need a worst work session. My concern is this, we don't even have a two thousand fourteen.
Thank you.
Uh, two thousand fourteen, uh, files. And we need those before we can go forward out there. And we're, we're gonna be, gonna have to execute amendments and, and, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but as long as we're in budget, say the police department, we're not going over budget on them, if we're maybe, you know, we're able to make some amendments until we got, as many as we make at one time.
So this list would be a good starting point for y'all to possibly be able to add to as you're getting savings balanced, to be able to give us a much more accurate description in a work session, possibly? I mean, is that a plan?
Right, but as far as this.
Well, this is for fifteen budget amendments and.
Yeah. Well, you know, some of, uh, it would be good to have a work session to really talk about our budget. In order to have a good work session, I feel like we've got to have the two thousand fourteen files.
Did y'all, did y'all hear that?
No.
No, they were.
Oh, they're not, let me repeat.
I think what you're suggesting is that it would be better for us to have a work session in regards to budget amendments, and that that work session would be more beneficial once you and, or have time to get them.
That's my, that's my suggestion, it's stuck to mayor and council, what they, so does I. But that would be my, my recommendation. But if we in danger are going over, you know, then, uh, then, you know, we need to make adjustments. But right now, we, we have no financials from January through the end of March for this year.
Right, and one suggestion I would have going into this year, there are two, there were two very big things, right, the fact that I noticed whenever the vote went through to adopt the fifteen budget, the fifteen budget did not approve the payment for the hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the match grant, which we obviously already got, the bills being approved, we paid for them, it needs to be fixed. The other thing I didn't see was express. I didn't see the tip service listed.